Before I call this meeting to order, I'd like to note we have interpretation services for this meeting. The interpreter for this evening is Mr. Corona. Mr. Corona, could you mind raising your hand in the back? And if you need any kind of listening device, you can, for interpretation services, you can ask Mr. Corona. Antes de llamar a la junta a orden, me gustaría notar que contamos con servicios de interpretación para esta junta, y el señor Corona está ahí atrás sentado. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of April 4th, 2023. Madam Clerk, could you please make an announcement about accessing the meeting and call the roll?
In order to participate in the City Council meeting virtually, please register to speak using the link on the agenda under public comment. To raise your hand to speak on a particular agenda item, please use the Raise Hand button in the Zoom meeting portal. If you are using a phone, please press star nine on your telephone keypad and then press star six to unmute your phone. When it is your time to speak, you will be requested to unmute your microphone and speak for the time allotted by the mayor. Your microphone will be muted upon completion of your comments. Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Here.
Councilmember Soto?
Here.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Here.
City Attorney, Mr. Watson, would you like to give the closed session report?
Yes, Madam Mayor. With respect to the conference with legal counsel regarding the existing litigation, instructions were provided for the upcoming settlement conference with the judge.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda this evening is a proclamation, and Councilmember Soto will be making the presentation.
This proclamation is in recognition of Community Development Week, whereas the week of April 10th through the 14th, 2023, has been designated as National Community Development Week to recognize and celebrate the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnership Program. And whereas since 1974, the CDPG program has provided annual funding and flexibility to local communities to provide affordable housing, a sustainable living environment, and basic human services. And whereas since 1990, the home program has created and preserved affordable housing for low-income families. And whereas annually, the city of Santa Maria receives an average of $1.5 million in CDPG funds and an average of $300,000 in home funds. Now therefore, the mayor, Alice Patino, of the city of Santa Maria hereby recognizes the week of April 10th through the 14th as National Community Development Week in the city of Santa Maria to celebrate and showcase the programs and projects which are funded by federal grant programs like Community Development Block Grants and Home Investment Partnership. And here to accept the proclamation is the Community Programs Division, Rosie, Alicia, and Adriana.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Rosie Rojo. I'm the Community Programs Manager. Joining me tonight is Grant Specialist Alicia Vela and Housing and Community Services Technician Adriana Delgado. The three of us make up the Community Programs Division, which manages these federal grant dollars. Community Development Week is an opportunity to share with the public just how wonderful the CDPG and home programs are and what a difference they make in our community. And to tell you a little bit more, here's Alicia and Adriana.
For the past 47 years, CDPG has provided local communities like Santa Maria with an important source of funding to address a variety of needs, including homelessness, at-risk youth, seniors, individuals with special needs, and public facility improvements, to name a few. And over, for over three decades, the city of Santa Maria has also participated in the County Home Consortium with the County of Santa Barbara. Home funding helps create affordable housing in our community, and both CDPG and home are administered nationally by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. These programs are needed more than ever to help our most vulnerable residents and to improve the overall condition of our neighborhoods.
And I'll hand it over to Adriana.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. In honor of Community Development Week, our division will be sending out an electronic newsletter next week, and this newsletter will highlight the various projects and services that have been funded with CDPG and home funds over the past year. In addition, next Wednesday, April 12th, we will be hosting a Coffee and Donuts meetup right outside of our office, the Community Development Office, and this will be an opportunity to meet the team, ask questions about the funds, and learn more, and also enjoy some free treats. Again, this is next Wednesday, the 12th, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m., and our address is 110 South Pine Street.
Thank you so much. See you next week.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Next, we have another proclamation, and Councilmember Cordero will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This proclamation is in recognition of Donate Life Month, whereas organ tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need. More than 100,000 individuals nationwide and more than 20,000 in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list. And on average, 17 people die each day while waiting due to a shortage of donated organs. And whereas, the need for donated organs is especially urgent in the Hispanic, Latino, and African-American communities. And whereas, a single individual's donation of a heart, lung, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives. Donation of tissue can save and heal lives of more than 75 others. And a single blood donation can help three people in need. And whereas millions of lives each year are saved and healed by donation of organ tissues and marrow and blood, and the spirit of giving and decision to donate are not restricted by age, medical condition, and California residents interested in saving lives through living kidney donations are encouraged to visit the website livendonationscalifornia.org. That's, again, that's livendonationcalifornia.org for more information. And whereas Santa Maria residents can sign up with Donate Life California Registry when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID card at the Department of Motor Vehicles. Now therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor for the city of Santa Maria, hereby recognizes April 2023 as National Donate Life Month in the city of Santa Maria and encourages everyone to check yes when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID card, or by signing up at the donatelifeCalifornia.org or dot vida california.org. In witness, the mayor has caused her signature to be placed on this and the seal of the great city of Santa Maria to be affixed on this fourth day of April 2023. And here to receive this is Scott Burns. Here?
I seem to come here a lot, or once a year.
At least once a year, right?
Thank you for the proclamation. This will end up at a Donate Life Run Walk at the end of the month down in Los Angeles, that when I'll make a picture and send it back to you guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. As mentioned, my name is Scott Burns, and Memorial Day 2015, I was sitting on a friend's sailboat at Santa Cruz Island for his anchorage, and when Santa Barbara Harbor Patrol came by and said, "Mr. Burns, we have a kidney for you." I had a, I'd been on the waiting list since 2012, and I had kidney failure. I wasn't expecting a kidney that week. I was waiting only three years, and normally it takes about seven years to get a kidney transplant. Currently, about 250 people in Santa Barbara County are waiting for a, an organ, and as of in February in Santa Maria, we have 84 people on a waiting list for either a kidney or a liver. So it's, it's, it's not a big number, but locally, it's a big number. So, but enough numbers, I get on, I get off the Harbor Patrol, I get on their boat, head home, the next morning, I'm at Cedars-Sinai's Hospital at 11:30 in the morning, I have a fully functioning kidney. But that's only part of the story. Vivian Butil, a nurse at Cottage Hospital, had collapsed in her gym. They thought it was a stroke, they took her to Cottage Hospital, they found out it was a, a brain aneurysm. She was basically brain-dead. Her family decided to donate the organs. Myself and four other people ended up with, were alive because of her donated organs. I'm going to read a short paragraph of a letter that Michael, who received her liver, wrote her family. He, this, this is 2015, he wrote the letter, and so let me just read a short bit of it, using my glasses for some particular reason, if I can do this correctly, and I hope I don't screw it up. Great. Dear friends, this is the most difficult thank you letter I have ever written. I have opportunities to thank people for many reasons, but how do you thank for life itself? Without your kindness, I would not be alive writing this letter today. My name is Michael, I'm 57 years old and in California. In May 2014, I was diagnosed with a form of incurable liver cancer. My only hope was a liver transplant, and I was put on a waiting list until a suitable donor could be found. Those were long and difficult weeks for myself and especially my four children, who were devastated watching their beloved father wither away in pain and anguish before their eyes. And then the telephone call came. An angel had been found, someone whose family was willing to make the ultimate gift of life itself. I thank the Almighty that my transplant was successful, but more importantly, I thank you every single day for what you have done for me and my family. I am truly sorry for your misfortune, but hope and pray that you will find comfort in the knowledge that you have restored the life of another person and brought relief and comfort to a grief-stricken family. Our thoughts and blessings are with you, whoever you are, wherever you may be. Thank you for the gift of life. I, I read that to remind you that the transplant people were just not numbers, were actually people. And whenever you have a, to have a chance for a conversation about having a pink dot on your driver's license or talking to a friend, have that conversation. You don't want to have it when you're in the hospital or when a friend, a loved one's in the hospital. Thank you for the proclamation. If you have any questions, I'm here. Otherwise, I'm going to take off.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. God bless you. Next, we have another proclamation, and Councilmember Escobedo will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This proclamation is for the Fair Housing Month, whereas the city of Santa Maria recognizes that the United States Congress enacted Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, which was amended by the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 and the Fair Housing Amendments Act in 1988 as the directive for fair housing. And whereas the fair housing laws outlined by said, by said act guarantee the rights of equal housing opportunities for all residents of the United States regardless of race, color, religion, sex, national origin, disability, or family status. And whereas the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development declares the month of April 2023 as Fair Housing Month. And whereas the city of Santa Maria contracts with the Legal Aid Foundation of Santa Barbara County to perform random testing of fair housing practices of landlords and property managers, reviews local newspapers for evidence of housing discrimination, assists in resolving discrimination disputes through litigation or referral, makes presentation to Santa Maria adult education classes regarding rights of single parents and ethnic minorities to equal housing opportunities, and conducts community workshops to educate landlords and property managers regarding fair housing. Now therefore, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the city of Santa Maria, do hereby recognize the month of April 2023 as Fair Housing Month in the city of Santa Maria and encourage the continuous celebration of equal housing opportunities and the progress made in opening the doors to housing opportunities for all residents in Santa Maria. And here to receive this proclamation, we have Juan Carlos Reyes of the Legal Aid Foundation.
Thank you. I would like to thank the city of Santa Maria Council for recognizing Fair Housing Month. The Legal Aid Foundation is ongoing and committed to providing, being the provider of fair housing here in the community. Fair housing is a necessary, vital part of ensuring a thriving and inclusive community. Since it is a part of creating a thriving community and it is a form of justice for everyone to have equal opportunity to have housing here in the city of Santa Maria, I would like to remind everyone that justice too long delayed is justice denied. I am the Legal Resource Attorney, so if you have any questions, if anyone in the community is free to go over to Legal Resource Center right across the street at the courthouse, and we could help discuss, advise, and inform people of their rights, such as when, generally when fair housing is implicated, it might be due to rental property, home selling, home appraisal values, or something else like mortgage rates. All these things are protected under federal and state laws, and they apply to all equally. The Legal Aid serves as a provider for fair housing here in the community, and we engage in several things. We do an annual monitoring of fair housing. We look at all advertisements, make sure they're in compliance and not in violation of anything. Common violations that people may have seen or heard of would be, we do not accept Section 8. We do not have any property here for those with children. We also do not accept people of certain ethnicities, or people refuse to show you a house because for national origin or suspected immigration status. All of these are protected things, and we would like to once again thank the city of Santa Maria for their ongoing commitment to preserving a thriving community and fair housing. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is another proclamation, and Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez will be making the presentation.
Whereas National Sexual Assault Awareness Month is an annual campaign to raise public awareness about sexual assault and educate communities and individuals on how to prevent sexual violence. And whereas people of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds fall victim to sexual violence, which is widespread and impacts every person in the community, and whereas rape and sexual violence of all kinds continue to occur at an alarming rate, more than one in three women and one in four men will experience sexual violence in their lifetime. And whereas emotional and physical scars resulting from the sexual violence are often permanent, therefore, working together to educate the community about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions is so important. And whereas a coalition of organizations exists that directly confronts this crisis, including North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center, law enforcement agencies, churches, healthcare providers, and volunteers from the community that serve these agencies who are helping in the effort to end sexual assault. And whereas prevention is possible when everyone gets involved by increasing education, awareness, and community involvement, recognizing the compassion and dedication of the individuals involved in this effort, and noting the challenges of the victims, survivors of sexual assault in their families and friends as they struggle to cope with the reality of sexual violence. Now therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor of the city of Santa Maria, does hereby recognize April 2023 as National Sexual Awareness Month in the city of Santa Maria, and encourages all residents and businesses to participate in a month full of recognition and activities provided by the North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center to increase awareness of sexual assault and to create solutions in an effort to eliminate sexual violence from this city. And this is going to be accepted by Karen Powers of North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I have to say, it's very hard to stand up here and say anything positive about sexual assault awareness, except that we all want to do it. Every day when I walk out my door, I'm fighting for sexual assault prevention, and because I'm getting emotional, doing this 15 years, it still kicks me. But I thank you for the recognition, I thank you for the proclamation, and together, we really can stop sexual assault. It's just a matter of everybody knowing and believing when somebody comes to you and tells you that they've been assaulted. As was said, an average of one in four people in their lifetime will be sexually assaulted at least once. So if you hear about it, talk about it, bring it up, call people on their dirty jokes, call people on their inappropriate behaviors, harassment, because every little bit counts, and until people will respect, no, it's going to keep happening. So I, sorry, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. The final proclamation this evening will be presented by me. Whereas child abuse and neglect are a community condition and problem, finding solutions depends on involvement among people in the community. And whereas Child Welfare Services had 1,681 referrals for possible abuse in the Santa Maria Valley in 2022. Let me read that again. Whereas Child Welfare Services had 1,681 referrals for possible abuse in the Santa Maria Valley in 2022. And whereas the effects of child abuse and neglect are felt by communities and need to be addressed by the entire community. And whereas North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center and its partners have been committed to educating the community on child abuse and neglect, and are sponsoring several events throughout the month to heighten public awareness of abuse in the northern county of Santa Barbara. These events will provide information and materials that support families to prevent child maltreatment and celebrate people who work with and support children and families. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, youth organizations, religious organizations, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, the business community, and residents. And whereas all residents should become more aware of the importance of prevention in the community and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe nurturing environment. Now therefore, I, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the city of Santa Maria, do hereby recognize April 2023 as National Child Abuse Awareness Month in the city of Santa Maria, and call upon all the residents, community agencies, religious organizations, businesses, and medical facilities to increase their participation in the effort to prevent child abuse. And witness thereof, set my hand to cause the seal of the city of Santa Maria to be affixed this fourth day of April 2023. And here to accept this is Karen Powers to the North County Rape Crisis. And I want to say, this is a great brochure. It says, "No More," K-N-O-W, "Do More, No More."
Same thing with child abuse. It's hard to say anything positive, except again, support. Again, if a child or anybody comes to you with things that are happening to them, please believe them, please listen. There is help out there. We've got a great group of people in northern Santa Barbara County, law enforcement, com, Child Welfare Services, the center, teachers, school districts. We have a great program in the schools that talks about say no, get away, tell someone, has kids pay attention, do their uh-oh feeling. We've all got it, and when you feel it, something's wrong. So we do all we can, and we can't do it without you, so we appreciate you a lot. Every year, and as long as it takes, we'll fight the fight. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda this evening is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not on the printed agenda this evening. If you are participating via Zoom and wish to make a public comment, now is the time to raise your hand in the Zoom portal. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak form or request acknowledgement in Zoom.
Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers this evening?
It appears that we have one speaker in the building and none in Zoom at this time.
And please set the timer for three minutes. Gary Hall. Good evening, Mr. Hall.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, staff, and citizens of Santa Maria. My name is Gary Hall. I'm a resident of Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates at 2135 North Railroad Avenue here in Santa Maria. I represent the North Santa Barbara County Mobile Homeowners Team, or NESBID. For over four years, I have been attending these meetings, asking Santa Maria to join over 100 other California jurisdictions that have provided their mobile home residents with protection from excessive rent increases, and in that way helped maintain affordable housing for their senior and low-income citizens. You recall at the June 7th, 2022, City Council meeting, Councilmembers Soto, Escobedo, and Cordero approved the following motion. Following council discussion and public input on motion, direction was given to staff to work with community members and park owners to examine enhancing the model lease agreement, to see if there was room for improvements, and to look at alternatives. Thank you. Since its passage, the mobile home resident representatives have participated in three stakeholder meetings that have produced genuine optimism and a real sense of progress. As you may know, relevant legislation was introduced in the current Assembly session in Sacramento. Assemblymember Al Murasucci from LA County has introduced AB 1035, which is titled, "Mobile Home Parks Rent Caps." We believe AB 1035 does provide some appealing language. Our attorney, Bruce Stanton, has in fact been participating in discussions regarding the bill and contributing to the bill language. the bill and contributing to the bill language. When passed, we believe AB 1035 could act as a very efficient backstop for mobile home rent stabilization in Santa Maria. Of course, no one knows when or if AB 1035 will ever be passed. Instead of waiting to see, we believe we would be in our collective interest to keep negotiating and continue honoring the June 7 motion by working on model lease enhancements and looking at alternatives. We would, sorry, we would prefer to avoid further delays and keep working on our local issues with our local city officials and staff, with the local park owners, and the local citizens. Our overall goal remains to provide protection to all Santa Maria Mobile Home residents presently living in an unregulated rental market where the current model lease program has been ineffective in protecting homeowner equity and maintaining affordable mobile home housing. We continue to believe that goal is achievable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Before moving on, Mr. Stillwell, do you have any comments? Okay. Moving on to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, could you please read the description?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion? Okay, do I have a motion?
No move, Madam Mayor.
Do I have a motion and a second? Having heard the motion and second, is there any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero.
Hi.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilera Hernandez.
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye. Next is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider the Block Grants Advisory Committee's recommendations for the allocation of fiscal year 2023/2024 Community Development Block Grant Program Funds and allocate $37,500 to public service programs. Staff report is to be made by the Community Programs Manager, Ms. Rojo.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight, we will conduct a public hearing to receive comments from the public as part of the drafted fiscal year 2324 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan, and consider the Block Grants Advisory Committee's recommendations for the allocations of CDBG capital and public services, and have council members allocate their $37,500 to public service programs, and review and approve the overall allocations which make up the drafted fiscal year 2324 CDBG Action Plan. As you heard earlier during our CD Week Proclamations, CDBG is a program administered by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, better known as HUD. CDBG's main requirement is that the city's activities and projects meet one of three national objectives, in particular, primarily benefit low-to-moderate-income people or areas. Nearly two-thirds of the city's population is considered low-to-moderate-income, so this means that the majority of the city's residents benefit from these CDBG dollars. Our Block Grants Advisory Committee is currently made up of 14 volunteers that have spent countless hours reviewing agency applications, conducting site visits, and generating reports. Before you tonight are the proposed CDBG recommendations that the committee thoroughly deliberated and voted on. And before I proceed, I would like to thank our committee members for voluntarily dedicating their time and hard work to help ensure our CDBG dollars will fund projects and programs that will positively impact our community. And we do have a few committee members here tonight with us if they could stand to be recognized. They really have worked so hard and spent so many hours going through each application and reviewing all of the attachments, and doing everything they could to make sure that the funding is allocated appropriately. And those are the recommendations you'll see tonight. On February 27, the city received confirmation from HUD that it would receive close to 1.4 million for the upcoming fiscal year. This is about a 6.5% decrease from the current fiscal year, and about a 14.5% decrease from fiscal year 2122. So we have seen a decrease in our allocation in the last two years. Of the upcoming fiscal year's amount, 20%, which is approximately 268,000, is available for general administration. 15%, which is roughly about 209,000, is available for public services. And the remaining 65% plus repurposed CDBG funds from previously closed-out projects are available for capital funds, which bring us to about 938,000. A recap of the estimated available funding for the CDBG program is in your attachments, Attachment A. In Attachment B of your packet, you will see our priorities. As part of our funding process, the Block Grants Advisory Committee conducted a virtual community needs meeting last year on August 8 to kick off the funding cycle and receive comments from the public about the needs and priorities in the community. Participants spoke about the increased need to continue funding programs and projects that assist the homeless, youth, those suffering from abuse, mental health, and/or trauma. The needs expressed by the public were already reflected in the existing CDBG funding priorities, and therefore, the committee did not recommend any changes to the priorities outlined in our five-year consolidated plan. The priorities for the upcoming fiscal year were adopted by the City Council during the September 20 meeting. A notice of funding availability and requests for applications were issued on September 8. Agencies interested in applying were required to attend a mandatory pre-application workshop on October 20, and then applications were due on December 7. Staff received 24 public service applications and five capital project applications. In addition to the five applications, there is also a request to continue funding the administrative operations for the city's tenant-based rental assistance program. This past January, the Block Grants Advisory Committee broke up into five teams and conducted in-person site visits to learn more about the applicants and their proposed projects and programs. Afterwards, each team wrote a report about the agencies they visited. These reports were then shared with the rest of the committee. The committee then held two public deliberation meetings. The first deliberations meeting took place on Monday, February 13, and applicants were allowed to go before the committee to answer any additional questions committee members had. The second deliberation session took place on Thursday, February 16. At this meeting, the public could observe the deliberations process. Committee members discussed the applications, utilized the information gathered and provided by staff, and voted on the recommendations that are presented to the City Council, and those are Attachments F and G. During the Tuesday, October 18, 2022 meeting, City Council, the City Council direction was to rank the proposed capital projects in order of priority. At that meeting, the City Council expressed interest in all of the proposed projects. The Block Grants Advisory Committee took the City Council's recommendations and proposed funding accordingly. And you can see Attachment G for the breakdown. The only applicant not recommended for funding is the People's Self-Help Housing's Los Adobes de Maria Relocation Project. For the city's HUD representative and additional research conducted by staff, this type of activity is administratively and financially burdensome under CDBG regulations. Additionally, staff and the committee believe that the limited amount of funding available for this project would benefit more people if the funds were repurposed to another City Council-supported project. For this reason, staff and the committee recommend that the funding be given to an existing CDBG-funded project, the ADA Pedestrian Sidewalk Safety Improvement Project managed by the Public Works Department. This is a project that has been at the top of the City Council's list for a couple of years. Additional dollars will allow the city to improve the safety and accessibility of more low-to-moderate-income area sidewalks. And on the screen, you will see a quick allocation overview. So the majority of the capital funds would go to assist services that help those that are unhoused and disabled individuals, followed by those housing-related needs, that's 34%. And 13% would be public improvements and revitalization of neighborhoods. So now moving on to public services. Regarding the public services, the Block Grants Advisory Committee focused on those programs and projects that address basic human necessities, meet critical emergency needs, assist the elderly, prevent homelessness, and expand services for at-risk youth, and that is in Attachment F. Of those applications, nine of the 24 service applicants are recommended for funding. And here's a pie chart showing how the allocations are spread out. So 67% is going to critical need, followed by the elderly, and then at-risk youth, homeless. Due to the limited amount of funding available under public services, 15 applicants are not recommended for funding, those you can see on the screen. Staff and the Block Grants Advisory Committee recognize that all the agencies provide excellent and needed services throughout the community. However, there's limited funding available. Each agency's overall program budget was taken into consideration to ensure that even without the CDBG funding, the program could still be sustained and services could still be maintained, at least on some level. When it comes to public services, each council member has $7,500 to add to an existing public service grant allocation. Each council member's allocation can be split between more than one agency or combined with another council member's $7,500 to fund an organization not being recommended for funding to meet the $15,000 minimum. Please keep in mind, the maximum for any agency is $20,924, which is 10% of the overall public service funding allocation. So at this time, we will open the discussion on the recommendations before you tonight for capital and public service funding. And once discussion is complete and public comment is heard, we will first discuss the approve and approve the capital project allocations, and that will be followed by council members making their $7,500 specific allocations to the public services category, and then the overall approval of public services allocations. And tonight's council recommendations for capital and public services will be backed for final approval at the May 2 council meeting, and that will mark the end of the 30-day public review period. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions of Ms. Rojo?
No questions.
No questions?
No questions.
Okay. Then I will open up the public hearing for both capital and public services allocations. Do we have any requests to speak or written correspondence? And I see you have a bunch.
I do. But before we do, we have written communications from Edwin Weaver, Santa Maria resident and executive director of Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley, thanking the CDBG Committee for supporting, funding for Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley, and requesting funding support for Good Samaritan Shelter and Freedom Warming Center. Brendan Smith, Anna Williams, Jacob Lesnar-Buxton, and Jennifer Griffin, Executive Director of Independent Living Resource Center, wrote in support of funding Independent Living Resource Center. And Pearl Garza, Operations Manager, wrote in support of funding for Smooth. And then we have 10 requests to speak in the building, and we have three hands in Zoom, excuse me, raised.
Thank you. Andrea Diaz, followed by Kristin Cahoon, followed by Sylvia Bernard.
I'm sorry, now six hands, six hands in Zoom.
Six hands in Zoom, okay. Good evening.
Good evening, City Councilmembers, Madam Mayor. I'm here representing Family Service Agency. I'm a family support services supervisor, and we actually have several family resource centers in Santa Maria located in school sites. And I'm here to talk about a success story that we've had recently. So we've worked with the family that consisted of a single mother with two school-aged children, a five-year-old girl, a 13-year-old boy. Mom is a survivor of domestic violence and works in agriculture to cover her family expenses. The family was referred to our agency due to behavioral concerns with the youngest child. The child was aggressive towards others, struggles with managing her emotions, and much more. Mom was receiving complaints on a daily basis from child school. Mom was at a point where she wanted to know what was wrong with her child and didn't know how to help her. Mom felt helpless and could not help but get emotional. The child had first fallen through the cracks in 2019, right before the pandemic started. She had been referred to specialists, but all had closed when the pandemic began. Fast forward to 2022, and the child had just gotten worse. When mom and the Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Program Case Manager first met, it was made clear that the process that followed would be long and difficult, and that it would require a lot of effort on mom's part. But mom was committed to do the work and get her daughter services that she needed. So we were able to get her parent education services that provided mom with tools that would help her deal with her child behavior. Mom began to attend parenting sessions and would share what she was learning and how she was applying the tools with her case manager. Yeah, so the child was referred to the local agency for therapy, and mom made sure to take her daughter to all of her therapy sessions. She also made sure that the child received speech services and needed so that she could better communicate with others. Child was able to get a full behavioral evaluation, which is still in progress. Child was also able to get a free bed, clothing from local programs here in Santa Maria, and mom was able to move out of her recreational vehicle into a low-income housing unit. So here at Family Service Agency, what we try to do is provide families, parents, with these resources that could help them be successful. And yeah, that's my story. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Diaz. Kirsten Cahoon, followed by Sylvia Bernard, followed by Jason Bumpus.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Kirsten Cahoon. I'm the Director of Homeless Services for the Good Samaritan Shelter. I have stood in this room annually for over a decade with deep gratitude for your continued support of our shelter programs. This year, I come before you more concerned than ever for the homeless issues that are facing our community. I know the job of the Community Block Grants Committee is a difficult one, and all the nonprofits in our community do great work. But I am confused as to why the largest homeless emergency shelter provider in the county and the only in your community was not funded when homelessness was at the top of the issues the community was concerned about and focused on for this grant cycle. Tonight, as I stand before you, there are over 120 of your citizens calling the 401 West Morrison Shelter Campus home. Of those, there's over 40 children, 20 seniors, 13 veterans, and countless others. These are only some of the folks. They're working in our fields, in our restaurants, in our stores, for the school district as crossing guards for the children after school. These are your people, the people we all have the responsibility to protect. If today Good Sam Shelter had to close our doors because of funding being directed to other models, and our cities did not support us, there would be 120 homeless on your streets, sleeping in front of your businesses, in cars in your neighborhoods, and in the parks where your children are playing. This is not acceptable. This site has sheltered your community for decades, and it should be all of our responsibility to stand behind it, not just in verbal support, but financially. Although we appreciate your capital funding for our family shelter repairs, I was truly devastated when I saw that we were not funded for our emergency shelter and our warming shelter operations. Yes, the funding is necessary, but for me, it was much more than that. This is my community. I have watched my staff work to the point of exhaustion during I have watched my staff work to the point of exhaustion during the pandemic as we grew, never stopping our services for even a moment to meet the needs of the Santa Maria community. I've watched 241 clients come into our warming shelters this year, wet, cold, and many sick from the weather. This year was a historical weather year. Staff worked hard to keep your unsheltered neighbors safe. If Good Sam had not stepped up to manage the warming shelters, I can only imagine the number of homeless deaths this city would have had to record this year. What we do is more than shelter. It's more than housing, and it's more than treatment. What we do saves lives. It puts families back together, protects children from being on the streets, and helps our homeless community become productive members and regain their self-worth and dignity. I know your job tonight is tough to decide where to allocate your funding, but I ask you to think of the effect it would be on your community if Good Sam was not here to provide the services that we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Sylvia Bernard.
My name is Sylvia Bernard. I'm the executive director of Good Samaritan Shelter. Homelessness is one of the most critical issues facing our city, let alone our nation. Based on the most recent 2023 point-in-time count, Santa Maria is one of the few regions that have seen another increase in the number of individuals experiencing homelessness, a total of 472 persons within the city of Santa Maria. In 2022, GSS, Good Samaritan Shelter, provided 22,774 shelter nights at the Santa Maria Shelter alone. We also provide an additional 12,310 shelter beds at the family shelter here in Santa Maria. In the last year, Good Samaritan Shelter provided services for more than 1,500 unduplicated City of Santa Maria residents. This winter season has brought more rain than we have seen in decades. Two years ago, Good Samaritan Shelter agreed to take over the administration and operations of the Freedom Warming Centers countywide. In Santa Maria, we activated 50 nights this season alone. We served 241 unduplicated clients and provided 1,321 bed nights. We were able to keep unsheltered individuals safe and dry and literally save lives. When we took over the Freedom Warming Centers two years ago, we met with all the funders, including the City of Santa Maria, to create an easy transition and express the importance of sustaining the funding to continue services. At that time, the City of Santa Maria agreed that we could apply for both funding sources, $20,000 for the shelter and $20,000 for Freedom Warming Center, and we were able to do that last year successfully to continue those services within the city. It is critical that we are able to secure funding from the city, not only to keep our doors open, but to leverage the county, state, and federal funds that we bring into the city. I respectfully request that you consider providing funding and support for the Good Samaritan Shelter. We truly provide the basic safety net for the most vulnerable in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard. Jason Bumpus. Followed by Lisa Bravo and Jason T. Lander. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. That's about it, I know.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Lisa Bravo, followed by Jason T. Lander.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Bravo, CEO for Family Service Agency, and that includes the Santa Maria Valley Youth and Family Center. I wanted to thank you for the funding that you've provided for us in the past, capital grants as well as service grants. And I also wanted to thank the staff and the committee for the amazing work that you did this year, trying to figure out how to allocate funds in the best ways possible. We truly understand that there simply isn't enough money to meet the astounding need in the community. It is, however, gratifying, and I have to say, I'm proud that our agency is part of this community and this council that cares so much about what's happening to the citizens of this city. So thank you for that. Andrea Diaz did provide a success story in regard to one of the families that we work with at our family resource centers. We do provide critical needs support, as many agencies here do. I think our biggest gap right now is really people that just walk in the door and need help with whatever. It might be food or clothing. It might be something much larger, like mental health counseling for their child and parenting support. We are one of, you know, one agency in a continuum of care of agencies, and I appreciate all the partnership that we have here with the other nonprofits as well, so that we can serve the community in the best way that we can. And we appreciate your consideration of our proposal for funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason T. Lander, followed by Isaac Veruman, followed by Edwin Weaver.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Patino, city council members, and City of Santa Maria staff. I encourage the city council to adopt the recommendations from the Community Development Block Grant Funding VTC's request. That's what Jason was doing so distinctly, so thanks. I would like to highlight two areas from our proposal for everyone here tonight that illustrate the benefits that the City of Santa Maria residents with disabilities will receive as a result of funding our proposal. First, our proposal directly aligns with priority number one identified by the City of Santa Maria for capital projects. Our capital project will address accessibility and service needs for residents of Santa Maria with disabilities, which you're seeing also with the public direction of funds towards accessible sidewalks in the other allocation. Second, our proposal addresses the issue of safety. Our requests make the City of Santa Maria a safer place for its residents with disabilities. Our sidewalks regularly flooded. This year's rains have frequently left our primary sidewalks underwater and unusable. Our proposal would resolve this issue by regrading and elevating sidewalks. Additionally, a proposal would create two covered outdoor spaces to provide a protected place for Santa Maria residents to wait for paratransit rides. Our current covered bus shelter can accommodate three people who use a wheelchair, leaving most of the over 200 city residents we serve daily unsheltered and unprotected while waiting for the rides. Thank you for your time and your support of our proposal.
Thank you, Mr. T. Lander. Isaac Veruman, followed by Edwin Weaver, followed by Andrea Mobley. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Weaver.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I want to thank you very much for considering Fighting Back for funding, and I want to thank Mr. Tamora and his board. It's a thankless job, really hard to distinguish between all these great programs. I'm here on behalf of Good Samaritan Shelter to ask your consideration for full funding for both of their programs. Fighting Back supports homeless families and homeless young adults in the community. Many of you already know this, but the community might not know that over a third of our elementary school students are considered homeless in Santa Maria Bonita School District, and over a third of our high school students as well. The Good Samaritan Shelter is really the last stop for families. It's the safety net for the least of these in our community. We absolutely have to fund the shelter. There's no other place for families to go. We sometimes, when there's no room at the shelter, we have to put people up into hotels or other things like that, but that's not sustainable. So we have to fund the shelter. And the warming centers are a must. I mean, just drive around our town and see where people are living out in the communities and the encampments. And we're working with the, you know, Hope Village as an answer to that, but in the meantime, there's no place to go when it's below freezing or when it's wet. And so these are our community members. When we talk to them, they're from here, they're from our community, they've grown up here, things have gone awry, and now they're on the streets. And this is the only chance for them to stay out of the weather and to remain alive is by providing them a warm place to stay just for the night, so they don't die overnight. Also, I'm very worried about fires. You saw what happened in Santa Barbara when encampments and people weren't provided warm places to stay. The only option is for them to light a fire to stay warm, and I'm worried as a community member and a resident of this city about fires being started by people trying to stay warm in inclement weather. We can prevent this by funding the warming centers and by providing shelter for folks in the family shelter. So please, we ask that you would work together and try to fund both programs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Andrea Mobley, followed by Karen Powers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I am the North County Mentor Coordinator for the Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse, also known as CADA. And I'm here to tell you about our mentor program. It's very similar to Big Brothers and Big Sisters, which no longer exists in Santa Barbara County. One difference is that CADA's program is very connected to the school district. After providing a mentor program in the Santa Barbara area for many years, we started a similar program here in Santa Maria this year. The mentor program is a prevention program that uses positive interaction and support to deter problematic behaviors in local at-risk youth. Our volunteer mentors encourage personal growth, self-esteem, academic performance, and healthy family dynamics. Referrals are sent to us by counselors or teachers in the Santa Maria Bonita School District for students aged 8 to 13, which is grades 3 to 8. The students are referred for various reasons, including academic IEPs, low self-esteem, lack of family support, poor social skills, and so on. There is no cost to the mentees or their families to participate in the mentor program. All of the referrals this year have come from our pilot school, which was Jimenez Elementary, but next year, we plan to expand to all the schools in the Santa Maria Bonita School District. Mentors meet with their mentees for a minimum of one hour per week, and they commit to mentoring the student for a minimum of one year, although many of our matches meet for far more than an hour per week. There's no certification required to become a mentor. However, applicants are required to pass a DOJ background check, live scan fingerprinting, TV testing, and they provide proof of COVID vaccination. We appreciate the City of Santa Maria for allowing us to speak tonight, and any additional support to sustain this much-needed community program going forward would be put to good use. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Powers.
Good evening, once again. I'm Karen Powers. I'm the Finance Human Resource Director for the North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center, and I want to express my gratitude for the opportunity, first, to speak, but also to be considered for funding in the amount that the Block Grant Advisory Committee suggests to you. The funding allows for the center to provide a safe, comfortable, and easily accessible location for individual clients and support groups of adults molested as children, survivors of sexual assault, child abuse, and human trafficking. And we also have four staff at the Santa Maria office. The support is also important because it shows the belief by the city council in our mission and the support for our endeavors to end these horrific crimes against city residents. And I really want to thank the Block Grants Advisory Committee sitting in on those meetings. When I retire, I'm not going to do that, because it's too hard. So I can't even believe what they go through. I appreciate each and every one of you, and the special project staff as well. Thank you.
Thank you. How many on Zoom? Six? Okay. Madam Clerk, I'll let you handle them.
Our first speaker on Zoom this evening is Jacob Lesnar Buxton. Mr. Lesnar Buxton? Yes, yes, we can.
My name is Jacob Lesnar Buxton, and I'm a system-trained coaching medium. We depend, given research, said, "For my name, have you been honored to be part of this good organization? I am here, here as you may. I have also received any additional funding allocation that may come in to this city. A word of thanks, you have with me, if I could, I have also worked in the Santa Maria community. When a fire broke out, meaning would be covered with many code variation. I LRC assisted, did with disabilities, did meaning for relocation, assisted for the year. Our staff has provided training on deaf culture and ASL to force, were due to this city. Also, we provided rural education to seventy people with intelligent, true world, this and the way of, with your disability in Chile, Chile. Also, the in careful work, were completely by a team of two or three, potent staff members, and we yield with assistance from this city and to be treated. All of it is good to hire free, potent staff members, and they come with, you have to hire more staff, which will lead to greater benefit for coaching with disabilities in this city. Tonight, you have an opportunity to assist, I have also in making, to writing its input in the Santa Maria community, by investing in our organization, you have been proud of people with disabilities, be for that, be tag, paying members of your community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buxton.
Next speaker we have is Chelsea.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hi, good evening. My name is Chelsea Bravo, and I am a consumer of the Independent Living Resource Center, living with disabilities on the Central Coast. Tonight, I am here to talk to you about why I LRC should receive any extra CDBG funding. I LRC has provided me a backup battery for a CPAP, a Chromebook, and and an outlet to gain social support through online support groups when we were all shut in during the height of the pandemic. I LRC has also provided me support in finding affordable healthcare. I asked that you consider giving any available funds to the Independent Living Resource Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alexa Martin.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. I want to thank you for the opportunity to make public comment tonight. My name's Alexa Martin, and I'm the Program Director for the Independent Living Resource Center. I LRC is the only cross-disability peer-run organization in the county. We've been providing services to individuals with all disabilities of all ages and income levels for the past 47 years. Our mission is to promote independent living and full access for people with disabilities through advocacy, education, and action in our communities. Benefits assistance, housing navigation, advocacy, personal assistance, assistive technology, emergency preparedness, and services specific to the deaf and blind communities are just a few of the many services we provide. Services that enable our consumers to live more independent lives, maintain their housing... Services that enable our consumers to live more independent lives, maintain their housing, prevent institutionalization, or in transitioning back to community-based living. Local support is critical to our success and ability to continue providing services each year. It allows us to leverage funds for our state and federal grant matching requirements, and it demonstrates the support the City of Santa Maria has for its residents with disabilities. I want to thank you for all your years of support for our organization. We recognize the grant committee has an incredibly challenging job with many worthy applicants and that these decisions aren't made lightly. While we did not make the cut for recommendations this year, we know this was not due to a lack of wanting to support our agency, but because there truly wasn't enough funding to go around. In fact, we saw the committee recommended that I L R C be funded if they were to receive an increase from HUD to support C D B G initiatives. Without funding, we will have to reduce staff hours, which would result in lengthy waitlists and reduce our capacity to provide these important services. I'm here tonight to encourage the city council members to use discretionary funds to support I L R C so we can continue the great work we do in the Santa Maria community. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Alexa. Next, we have Michelle Ward.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Ward, and I am the Transition Advocate for I L R C in Santa Barbara County. I work with consumers who are currently residing in an institution to help them obtain independent living. I want to encourage you to use discretionary funds to support the disability community in Santa Maria, an often overlooked group. Funding I L R C can help to assure that increased and maintained independence are prioritized for people with disabilities in our community. Older adults and individuals with disabilities often need a variety of services, including housing navigation, assistive technology, personal assistance, benefit counseling, transition, American Sign Language interpretation, advocacy, and more. These are all services that can be found within the doors of I L R C. In my role with working in institutions in the area, I help to plug the pieces together for people leaving institutions. I am often faced with challenges that are even difficult for me, an experienced service provider, to navigate, excuse me. But at I L R C, we are dedicated to supporting individuals to age in place and receive the supports that they need in their community of choice. Without these services, individuals are often re-institutionalized or put out on the streets. I L R C works to prevent this each day. I ask that the council members please support the work that we do and consider funding our agency so that we may continue helping people with disabilities and older individuals in Santa Maria. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, council members, our next speaker is Howard Rudnick.
Hello. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. Thank you for the opportunity for me to comment tonight. My name is Howard Rudnick. I'm the Program Services Manager with the Independent Living Resource Center. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your past support, and I'd like to speak for just a moment and point out that disability is the only minority group that any one of us can join at any time. How can someone join a minority group, you may be asking yourself? What I mean by this is that disabilities can be acquired by anyone, regardless of income, race, gender, religion, or orientation. An accident that causes, one, the need, the use of assistive technology such as a wheelchair, an illness, a loss of hearing or vision as we age, a traumatic brain injury can happen to anyone at any time. It's estimated that one in four Americans will experience some level of disability in their lifetimes, twenty-five percent of all Americans. If someone is currently or becomes disabled, they qualify for services that we offer free of charge. In the past year alone, we have been able to offer seven thousand eight hundred and six individual services to the residents of Santa Maria alone in the past year. I L R C is committed to helping individuals achieve independent living, which is an excellent way to keep individuals from becoming unhoused. If the city council members agree to use your discretionary funds to support I L R C, we can continue to offer services to the great people of Santa Maria. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. And our final speaker on Zoom is Brandon Smith.
Good evening, Speaker.
Yes, we can.
Great. Well, thank you, Madam Mayor and the city council of Santa Maria. My name is Brandon Smith, and I am the Emergency Preparedness Services Manager with the Independent Living Resource Center. I'd first like to thank you for this time to speak in this council's history of funding this great organization. The Independent Living Resource Center is an indispensable part of the disability community of Santa Maria. Because of the I L R C, the City of Santa Maria has access to the Disability Disaster Access and Resources Program, which assists those with disabilities in emergency preparedness by creating personalized emergency plans and providing backup power solutions for those with medical devices. We, the I L R C, are the only disability agency in the city which provides such a service. The resources that the I L R C provides to the City of Santa Maria cannot be matched and cannot be replaced. Since I have started working with the I L R C, I have assisted close to fifty consumers with disabilities in Santa Maria alone and helped them become prepared for the next disaster and emergency. Please help the I L R C keep its doors open in Santa Maria so that we can continue to serve this great community. Thank you.
Thank you. Council members, Madam Mayor, that concludes.
Thank you.
Our Zoom speakers.
So I'd like to close the public hearing, bring this item back to the council, to first consider the committee's capital project allocation recommendation and contingencies.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
A simple legal recommendation for potential conflict of interest, I will need to recuse myself from this item.
Okay. Yes, we're going to do the capital. The capital project allocation. That is Attachment G, right? Right, Rosie? Okay. Any discussion?
I have no comment, Madam Mayor.
So much for discussion. You know, I would really like to, this was really important in the staff report, that we would receive one million three hundred ninety-four thousand nine fifty-two for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, which is six point five percent decrease from the current fiscal year and fourteen point five percent decrease from twenty-one, twenty-two. So it has really, really fallen off. And my hat's off to the C D B G Grants Committee. You guys do a fantastic job. It is very, very difficult, and especially with the decreases that you've had in the past two years. Okay, so going on to the capital project allocation.
I would like to say as well, I want to thank the members. It's difficult to sit through all that, to go through all the applications. It's a lot of work, so I want to thank them for their time.
Okay, can I have a motion and a second for this?
I still move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further theories and any discussion? Would you like any discussion at all? Okay. Madam Clerk, I guess you can call the roll.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. Okay, so we usually do the seven thousand at the end. Is there some reason you're doing it before we do the public service allocations?
Is it seven thousand or seventy-five hundred?
Seventy-five hundred.
Did I say, what did I say?
Seven thousand.
Oh, okay, seventy-five hundred, yeah. Right.
You can proceed to approve what's being recommended and then do the allocation of the seventy-five hundred?
I have a question for legal.
If council so chooses?
Okay.
Do we get to allocate Mr. Escobedo's seventy-five hundred now?
Yes, it would be reallocated as to nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Nine thousand.
Three hundred and seventy-five dollars per council member.
Okay.
We're not leaving any money on the table.
No, yes.
You're giving three women more money to spend. Thank you.
Mr. Cordero, do you want to declare a conflict?
No.
Feel free to do so.
I think that I should get all of those Escobedos to my table.
You've got three noes on that one.
I just suggested.
I don't hear a second.
Let me ask you something. Mr. Stilwell, do we have any monies in the ARPA and any funds that we could use for the housing? For instance, for Good Samaritan and the shelters? Do we have any money? I know we don't have a lot of money laying around.
We do have unallocated ARPA money. The council had identified using it for three areas, for preserving fund balance, using it as a ways to reduce other costs or using it ways to increase revenue. But it has not all been expended.
Okay. I guess what I'm thinking is if we could use part of that, but that would have to agree with the council, so that, and then there would be other places that we could allocate our new monies on part of the list is.
How will you know how much that is?
Yeah, that would have to come back. So that's not part of this item. The money is available, and it would come back as a budget item.
As a budget item?
In June, it would be tied in with the rest of the budget or as a separate agenda item if the council wants. Before then, we could bring it back.
Because it's for ARPA.
Yeah, it's ARPA, not C D B G, right?
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so let's.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. Is it possible to do it the other way and allocate the money then so that the organizations would know that they have the money and then reimburse that? No, we can't do it backwards to what you just said.
Because it's not agendized. You're talking about different monies.
Yes. It's both federal money with strict conditions applied. And so the ARPA money, we do have available for those uses identified by council, and the C D B G monies available for the uses we've identified tonight.
Yes. Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Soto?
I have a question, and it's regarding what you just mentioned for the Freedom. The question that you posed was for Good Samaritan Shelter, both the Freedom Warming Center and the homeless shelter programs?
That's what I, those are my thoughts, right.
Okay, and so I'm assuming that's not, that's not like capital campaign, it's providing a service, correct? And we would be able to use ARPA funds for that?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. I would be in support of that, Madam Mayor.
Okay. This is just, I'm just throwing that out as where we can get extra monies. I see you have a confused look on your face.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
I'm sorry, I should have, I should have asked you this earlier. I didn't.
Yeah, we just, we have an allocated budget with it. It is in the fund balance, so we're trying to anticipate how much might be available to do what you said. I mean, the money is, the council has allocated the money, and we would be happy to bring back an agenda item for you to do what you're saying now. But you could, I think maybe if you, let's see how we do it. If you could provide the direction tonight, we could take that under advisement as we add it, as we develop the budget.
Would we be, would we need to continue this item for the next meeting to be able?
Again, if it's the pleasure of the council by consensus to bring an item to allocate some ARPA funds towards that, you know, worthy cause, then we would also have to internally examine, are the funds available for such activity? Because I would need to go back through it. But we would bring back something, and especially if you gave us some parameters to look at that you would want to real, reallocate to as a consensus during your discussion.
Can we make a motion?
It wouldn't be a motion because it's not agendized. So that would not be appropriate. If you want to give us some.
We have the direction to do that.
Yeah, during your, during your discussion, if you'd like to say something along the lines of we would like to bring back an item since we're going forward with these other items.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Cordero.
Would there be a, would there be a danger of something not going right, and then we don't get it funded for Good Sam? I mean, I would hate to do something, I would hate to do something and allocate these funds and then say, whoop, sorry, Good Sam, it's not going to work. So if there's not, if it can't be as close to absolute as possible, then I would be in favor of delegating the money tonight.
Yeah, there is some risk because the ARPA money did come with specific conditions on what to spend it on, and ARPA did include some money for us to use in our general fund. And we're not sure how much of that general fund money is still available unallocated. We have been using it on projects, and so, and you may have just general, general fund money to be able to allocate to it, too, but we wouldn't know that at this point until we get into the budget.
Right, and that's why I was saying, we can't allocate that money without knowing how much is there. We have ninety-three, seventy-five to allocate today, and we're saying, we're not going to allocate maybe today to Good Sam because we think we have money, but what if we don't have money, then we'd want to use it today. So for me, it's difficult to make that decision without knowing what budget we're dealing with.
Well, then, let me ask you a question, then. Can we, say we approve, you know, I'm just hypothetically, say we approve tonight the allocations here, could we reserve our allocations that we are going to give till the next meeting? Till we find out what money's out there?
Is there a timeline?
Yeah.
When is the timeline?
There is a timeline. We have a thirty-day public review, so the plan is to come back on May 2nd so we can submit our action plan in on time, which is due at the end of May. If we push it back one more meeting, so if we push this back to May 2nd, as long as we're able to come back May 16th.
Well, don't we have a meeting on the 18th?
It would be this.
We would recommend to do it at the next meeting, then do it at the mid-May meeting for the thirty-day timeline.
Okay, but we could approve this, the public services recommendations tonight?
Yes.
I think that's important to do, if that's what everyone wants to, and then reserve the allocations that we're going to give.
Continue the balance of this to the next meeting to be brought back with some information on whether or not ARPA could be allocated.
Because it may not be that we could actually use that monies or a great portion of it.
We can't answer that.
Yeah, and I wish I had thought about that earlier today, and I would have asked, but tonight, when I'm hearing all the conversation, I'm trying to figure out if there's something that we had that we had used or something else.
So are we back to?
Okay, I'm going to make a motion.
Hold on, before we make the motion, are we back to risking it not getting funded?
No, no, no.
You have funding identified for tonight, and then the question is bringing, potentially bring back another item for additional funding or something else.
Yes.
So we're recommending allocating the funding you have agendized for tonight?
For tonight.
Yeah.
So we can fund whatever we want to fund with our thirty, with our ninety-three, seventy-five each of all of those that have been brought up here tonight, and then do something beyond that at the next meeting.
Yeah, either at the next meeting, if we want to tie it in with the C D B G schedule, or through your budget process, if you want to tie it in through your other budget allocations.
Does that make sense?
I think so.
I move that we approve the public services recommended allocations and reserve until the next meeting, which is scheduled for April 18th, for the nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five allocated to each council member.
Is that legal?
Yeah.
All right.
I need a second.
I just don't want to go to jail.
I need a, I need a second.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a. 我有一个 motion 和一个 second。有任何 further discussion？ anyone，好的。梅尔律师，请你请示一下。
议长埃格拉·赫南达斯。
是的。
议长Soto。
是的。
议长Cordero。
是的。
梅尔·帕蒂诺。
是的。一种 revised 列表， 和去掉那些已经被分配的， 然后重新。
梅尔， 只是为了澄清， 为了 staff， 所以在下一个会议， 你会希望我们把分配的， 已经晚上的， 加上一个讨论项目， 分配一些阿帕资金， 向未分配的项目，
是的。
和法律评估， 是否可以用于这个。
对， specifically 至于 Good Samaritan， 因为我。
作为 housing。
所以我们想确保那些符合。
是的。
正确。我澄清的理由是， 我不会在下一个会议， 所以我想能够让我的 staff 全部参与。
和， 你能重复你刚才说的吗？
是的， 我想 staff 给予专门的指示， specifically 至于 Good Samaritan Shelter， 两个程序， 我们能否分配阿帕资金， 给这两个程序， 因为有严格的要求。
如果我，如果我， Good Samaritan Shelter 不是唯一组织， 没有收到资金建议， 对 housing 或 homelessness， 所以我们会包括所有这些吗？ 作为。不是，所以，我不是， 所以我想说的是， 不是只只是我们， 保持 Good Sam， 而是所有， 所有机构提供的。
我的理解是， Miss Aguilera Hernandez 提供了 restrictions 和 parameters， 我们能花阿帕资金， 用于 housing。
好的，如果它是 housing， 没关系， 不是。
但是， 是的， 但是在这个层面上， 特别是， 对这两个程序， 对于我， 我只是想确认。
好的。
两个程序。
我们会回来， 与，与一个 robust 或者 otherwise 的讨论， 关于阿帕资金的使用， 对于 housing 相关的项目。
对。谢谢。
好的。接下来我们有一个公开庭审， 梅尔律师，请你读一下标题。
市议会将考虑年度用户费更新和 proposed 用户费计划。
所以， staff 报告将由财务部长， Miss Harvey。你还好吗？
是的。
你得戒烟。
钱的问题， 大家都走了。
好的。午夜，市议会， staff 和公众， 今晚我们将， 我们请求市议会 举行公众庭审， 并批准提高用户费， effective July 1，2023。作为背景， 用户费， 是个人选择服务，
Excuse me，Miss Harvey。
是的。
对不起， 打断你， 我正在等待 Mr. Scoobander 回来， 我忘了他不在。所以。
没问题。
好的， 先说，Miss Harvey， 你可以继续。
好的，我会继续。所以用户费是活动， 它们定义为城市提供服务， 给 individuals 或者群体， 用户费 philosophy 持续认为， 提供这些服务的成本， 不是整体社区。比如警察和消防， largely 税税支持。我们上次做的服务成本研究， 是在 2020 年， 和， 在4月2月21 日， 市议会 adopted 一项 master fee 决定， 增加费用到 50% 这些费用在 1月1 日生效。此外， 大约 1.6 亿， 由 individual users 移动成本， 结果降低了被 taxpayers 支付的费用。它也帮助城市加强服务， 通过提供这些服务的 additional 位置， 商业 license， licensing 和 scheduling 的检查。此外， 在4月4 日， 市议会 also adopted a user fee cost recovery level policy， 目标是全年 2026 年的全费用回收。所以，对于这个， 这个年度用户费更新， 城市与 revenue cost 专家签约， 他们更新了费用， 他们，他们更新了， 在2022 年， 就是研究开始， 他们会继续做这个， every，even year， 继续前进。他们会， 他们用， 成本研究的 basis， 是从 2020 年， 所以那些服务， 它们更新了， 使用职位数据， 和城市的 budget。RCS 和城市 staff 集会讨论， 添加和删除， 或者调整用户费。通常，用户费研究会， 会， across the board， 提高费用， 报告中的用户费 suggested， 被分成了六个类别。所以第一个类别是新费用， 它们， 它们没有在之前研究中包含。staff 已经指明了一些 additional 服务， 不是在研究中， 那些， 并且在之前的 schedule 上， 然后其他， 是服务， 他们意识到， 我们提供， 但我们从未在研究中。第二个类别， 那些基于， 再次， 只是为了项目和 budget， vast 大部分的费用都在这个类别。这些也是 council 想要阶段化， 到2026 年， RCS 算计了费用， 根据全费用恢复， 和阶段化成本恢复， 也就是额外的 50% 增加， 当前费用和全 100% 成本恢复。第三个类别是 full cost recovery immediately， fully recover outside costs， 或者一个费用是 another fee。所以，这些费用是 outside costs， such as advertising and engineering services， 其他费用，在这个类别中计算， 基于另一个费用， 而且现在很多当前费用是 subsidize， further subsidize， 它 further subsidize 费用， 和 lower cost recovery。第四类别是 full cost recovery immediately， 这些费用是 underwater 和 wastewater 费用， 因此， water 和 wastewater 费用应该采用 100% 成本恢复， 不让任何人获得。第五类别是 unchanged， 这些是 current fees， 是已经 full cost recovery 或者是国家法律限制。所以这些费用不需要， 需要改变。然后最后一个 category 是 category 6， 是 unchanged， 这个是， 真的， 在研究开始的时候， solid waste 费用是 council 近期 adopted， 所以需要回顾， 但我们已经包括了这些。所以另一个项目， 在， 在我们 council 授权利批准之前， 以前的用户费， council 还指示 staff 集会与开发商 stakeholders 合同， 在准备用户费时。所以 staff 集会与开发商 stakeholders 合同两次。第一次会议是， 在2021 年的 November， 我们开始更新报告， 城市 staff 给予当地规划专家 分享他们的观点， 担忧和想法， 关于规划费用。然后第二次会议是 2月13 日， 这个年， 或者， 报告完成， 或者 draft 报告完成， 并提供了一个 public improvement inspection fee， 有 significant 的变化， shareholders 提供了意见和担心， 关于新的费用， staff 集会再次查看这些费用， 并同意一些 modifications， 一些费用。一些 stakeholders 的担忧， 提出了， 新的费用看起来是 三到五倍以上， existing 费用， 正如我之前提到的， 2020 年的研究， 城市， 没有对那些费用进行征收， 因为他们不是， 他们没有在上次研究中。所以， staff 集会建议我们按照研究中， 研究， 保持与其他 proposed 费用一致。所以， 这就是为什么我们 让他们按照他们现在， approximately， 100% 成本恢复， 然后一个 approximate， approximately 75% 的全费用。然后另一个项目是， annexations， general plan zoning combinations， 和 general plan amendment and zoning change fees， 应该根据项目大小。staff 看看， 和 annexation， 同样的过程， 无论大小， 所以没有改变。staff 和 general plan and zoning combination， 这两个， 可以合并， 平均来说， 他们通过同样的过程， 所以它们结合， 我们把它们合成一个费用。然后第三个问题是， specific plan amendment fee 是太高， 也应该根据项目大小。staff 合同， 至于他们， 它有意义， 有 major 和 minor， 所以两个， 根据项目大小。所以这个已经加入了。最后一个是， determining fees 的 methodology， 并不计入 developers 或 development， 增加销售税和 property tax revenue， staff 懂得， 他们知道， 然而， 那些 developments 也需要 additional general benefit services， 比如警察和消防， 和任何 additional tax revenues 通过它产生的， 应该基于， 或者应该为那些服务支付。所以图表在这里， 根据当前费用， 只有 5.8 亿， 和总服务成本， 基于 full cost recovery 费用， 大约 9.1 亿。表格显示， 当前 tax subsidies 约约 3.3 亿， 和潜在 revenue 增长， 每年 2.7 亿， 在 full cost recovery。大多数服务是由 general fund staff 执行， 因此这些费用的收集， 支付了城市的 general fund。提供在 utility services 界别下的服务， 由 utility staff 打理， 这些费用收集， 会被记入 water，wastewater 或 solid waste funds。打扰一下， 我的鼻涕要开始了。所以这张图表是， 显示了用户费的 fiscal impact， 由部门， 和， additional revenue 2.7 亿， 可以产生， 如果市议会允许费用的 full cost recovery。你也可以注意到这张图表， 我们有一个 phase in， and additional， phase in additional revenue 列， 阶段化成本费用， 是 suggested alternative， 如果市议会决定， 他们不同意 staff 的建议， full cost recovery。和， the phase in cost recovery fee 是 generally， 50% 增加， 从当前费用， 到 full cost recommendation。如果市议会批准 phase in 费用， 额外 revenue 将被减少到 1.6 亿， 而不是 2.7 亿。也应该注意， 对于那些在 categories 3到 6， 我可以 briefly 那些快速介绍， 阶段化费用和 full cost recovery 费用， 在报告中， 都是相同的， 因为它们是， 我们建议的费用， 应该， 立即， 或者已经处于 full cost recovery。所以它们的原因是， 所以， 给 council 来一个简单的选择， 选择哪些是要去， 去批准， 如果他们选择批准， 任何一项， 是建议的。好的， 所以， 所以 staff 集会建议， 使用用户费 effective July 1， 基于报告中 full cost recovery， which is attachment A， 和 proposed user fee schedule， which is attachment B。正如 earlier， 在， 有， 有 cost fees， cost recovery fees 是 suggested alternative， 如果市议会不同意 staff 的建议， a suggested alternative should the city council not agree with the staff recommendation of full cost recovery. We, we also want to note that there are no fee increases, changes are proposed for the recreation and parks programs or facility rentals, library fees, with the exception of the library room rental fees, and the building plan check and inspection or the permit fees, as those are already at full cost recovery. Rec and park and library and the building fees, the current fees are included in the proposed user fee schedule that attachment B, so that city council may simply adopt the entire fee schedule rather than having separate ones. There is also some fees for services such as services for special public events that cannot be determined until the services are provided. And for that reason, those are not itemized on the proposed fee schedule, rather it's just noted that they are, will be used, the fully allocated rate for the position providing the service. Lastly, staff does recognize that increasing fees anytime is not popular. However, staff believes increasing the fees are necessary to help mitigate the city's ongoing structural budget deficit and outstanding funding obligations such as the citywide staffing, workers' compensation, and liability and, excuse me, insurance reserves for claims, and maintenance of facilities, park, city parking lots, streets, and sidewalks. That concludes my report. Chu Tai from RCS is on Zoom and, and he and I are both available to answer questions from the city council.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey. Before we hear from the public, are there any questions from the council? Ms. Soto.
Thank you. Ms. Harvey, thank you for the presentation. My first question would be, what would be, or do you know what the cost to the city is for phasing in full cost recovery? Is there a cost associated to the city? And if so, how much is that?
The, the difference between the two is about 1.2, I'm sorry, 1.1 million is the difference. So if we, if they're phased in, it's, the additional revenue is 1.6 million. And if we, if it's full cost recovery, it's 2.7 million additional revenue.
So there is no cost to the city for having it be phased in? Like an additional cost to the city for doing it in this way?
The, the additional cost would be the loss of the inability to spend that money on something else.
Got it. My other question is related to services that the city has already paused because of not receiving full cost recovery. I know that you mentioned city parking lots. And if I remember correctly, at one point during the budget process, we actually had to pause, provide, on providing some maintenance to some of our city parking lots. Can you give us other examples of things that we've had to postpone or pause because we're not receiving full cost recovery at this moment?
Yeah, we, we do have in the budget document, a funding obligations, that whole list right there that Mr. Stillwell has, that lists a vast majority of, a lot of things. But one of the things is our funding for staffing citywide is about 11.8 million that we have, that we did not fund because of, partly because of this, or because, lack of funding, I should say it that way. Workers' compensation is about 4.6 million. And maintenance on facilities, city facilities, about 787,000. And parking lots, city parking lots, 452,000. Streets, 4.6 million, even though we did fund a significant amount of, for streets and sidewalks. And then sidewalks is another 2.5 million. Those were the big ones.
I have one other question.
Sure, go ahead.
Can you mention workers' liability? But I also know that we have an unfunded, like liability interest. I don't know if you can speak, pension. Do you, would you mind speaking to that and how not receiving full cost recovery may impact that? Or does that impact it at all?
Well, the unfunded liability, pension unfunded liability is, is very large overall. And I apologize, I don't have the actual number in right now, but I know it is in the million, I think, oh, I don't want to give you a number, it'd be completely off. Yeah, I want to say 140 million, is that what, okay, see, I wasn't so crazy, I was thinking it was 160 million. But it's in the hundreds of millions, I'll go that, right? And annually, we do have a portion that we have to pay, and we do pay that, and we have, that's about 500,000 a year just for that portion. And so we, we are paying that. But again, lack of funding, we, if, if you have, you would have more ability to pay down some of that. I will say that it takes a lot to pay that down and to make a dent in it. So it does, it doesn't directly have an impact, but it does have the impact of not being able to pay part of that.
And every year, that amount is increasing, right? The amount that, the portion that we do pay.
Yes.
Okay. Those are all my questions for now, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Nope? Okay. I'll open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak or written correspondence?
Madam Mayor, we have no written communications, and we have one request to speak in the building and none on Zoom.
Lori Tamora.
Good evening, Lori Tamora, Urban Planning Concepts, and represent the development community on using these developer fees and application fees. We have had the opportunity to meet with staff on a couple of occasions, and we're looking at making some corrections to the fees. We understood that the recommendation was going to be for the 50% increase, not 100% in the meetings. And so I'm a little surprised with the recommendation that's being brought before you. We did understand that the number one category, the new fees, which is fees that were not or missed in the last allocation, were going to be added to the fee program. And those particular applications are, you know, part of the major applications that developers are going to bring in. This is not the mom and pops, this is not the local people, this is the bigger developers. I'm okay with them going up to the full 100% recovery on those fees because they are substantial applications. So that's a concession to this discussion. On the items listed in number two, I believe that all of the items from S001 through S044 should be at the 50% increase. And the reason being, you know, the one column that's not in here is the fact that the developer fees in May of '21 were increased, that was just two years ago, were increased by 50%. Now you're going to increase them again another 50%. And the staff's proposing 100% above what they're showing here. So it's a substantial increase, certainly way beyond inflation. And I think that the concession would be that you do the 50% increase on these, Phase One, which is exactly what the paragraph above that says you are planning on doing, which is 50% increase, 100% in 2026. That was the expectation, that was the understanding that was brought before the development community. I do have a couple of just finer, fine items to talk about.
Excuse me, Ms. Tamora, let me just stop you there. You're saying S001 to what?
Through S044.
44. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
S09 through S013 are the downtown specific plan areas. These are substantial increases for the downtown planning areas. And the downtown specific plan actually says that there's going to be reduced fees for development in the downtown area. So, you know, these are, these are big projects and they need to be looked at, but they've already been looked at like four times through all the specific plans and everything. So I question why there'd be such a big increase. But if you only go from the 50% increase, fine. Tentative parcel maps, S-17. This one is one that I think is very harmful to any small mom and pop application. A tentative parcel map is four lots. This is like a small lot in the downtown area that they wanted to buy. You're going to take that fee from, previously was 2,500 because you, or 3,000, you already raised it to 5,600. Now you're going to go to almost 8,000, and the other proposal is 10,000. A small mom and pop, I'm sorry, I keep using that phrase, but that's, that's somebody that's probably doing a small development. That's a big hit for them. And so I think sometimes these incremental increases are just a mathematical calculation, and they don't take into effect the magnitude of the projects. I, and I would suggest that you hold that tentative parcel map fee at the current number that you have right now at 56, 58. The other one is, and I should not be saying this, but S-41 and S-42 are the appeal fees. And these are the highest fees, I think, in the county for appeals. And if somebody wants to appeal a project, they're probably a local neighbor or somebody else that's going to appeal the project. And to come up with that kind of money is a deterrent for the public. And then the last one is 43 and 44, time extensions. Time extensions in most jurisdictions are probably $500 because the project's already been approved. They're asking for a time extension. There's no work involved in a time extension, other than bringing it before the planning commission with the same staff report. So these incremental increases on these applications are costly. And those are the ones that really stood out to me. I brought those up at our meetings. And so my request is that you, you do hold that agreement, which was to the 50% increase, and maybe direct staff to come back and look at those particular items that I highlighted here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions of Ms. Tamora? Thank you. Do we have any one on, to speak? Okay. So I'll close the public hearing and bring this back, item back to the council for any I guess, at this point, could I have some kind of a response to some of the questions that Ms. Tamora had?
Sure. So the, the downtown fees, your discretion's preserved to reduce those in the development agreements that the council executed. The appeal fees are what they cost during the analysis of what it takes for us to process the appeal fee, and that comes out to about $1,500 per lot. For a tentative map, yes, thanks. And, was there another? Those were the two that jumped out.
I'm sorry, didn't hear your question.
You mentioned one about parking, parking or some, sorry, I heard the word parking and mom and pop.
That was the tentative parcel map. That was on item S017. That would be a two-way, three-way, or four-way lot split.
I think the comment that was made was that that was going to hurt small businesses the most. Can staff speak on that?
Madam Members of the council, the, the reason for the, the higher costs for tentative parcel maps, so this is a land division for lots or fewer, as Lori had mentioned, they still go to, go before planning commission. And so any, any item that goes before a decision-making body, planning commission or city council, they, they usually end up requiring a lot of staff time. One consideration, and this is perhaps something for a future, and in coordination with the development community, that there could be consideration of modifications to the processes that, that will allow for more efficient review of what we consider smaller development applications. But there are some trade-offs. Items that go before a planning commission or city council, there's a purpose for public hearings, or there's a purpose for discretion review. Anytime we explore streamlining or reducing processes, such as having administrative approval, not, not taking something before a planning commission, again, there are trade-offs. You, you eliminate the public hearing process, but you also do reduce the time spent on, on the item. But that's, that's something for future discussion and consideration. But this tentative parcel map, the reason why it's high is, is because it does go before a planning commission body.
Yeah, Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question in regards to the S030, the landscape plan. So it's 0 to 5,000 square feet. So what kind of construction are we talking about that they would need such as this, this
Madam Members of the council, the, the landscape plan fees are for submission of landscape plans. And typically, sometimes what would happen, there's a new development, it could be a commercial shopping center, and they submit landscape plans for their proposed landscaping. Lately, because of water restrictions or requirements for cities to implement drought-tolerant landscaping, it, it does take more rigorous review. It's not common anymore that we would just see turf in, as part of a landscape project. And so 0 to 5,000 square foot, that's the area of, of landscape as part of the development proposal.
Yeah, my, my question would be in regards, in counting, on this area, this kind of project, what, who, who applies for these kind of services? Who, who gets, who's, who look for a landscape plan of 0 to 5,000 square feet? What kind of projects would, have we approved before, have they applied for these? Businesses, houses, or what?
Yes, council member Escobedo, it, it could be residential, it could be commercial. Those are the most common types of projects that we would receive a landscape plan for. And they could be submitted by a developer or, or residential property owner.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hernandez?
I, I want to know, when you guys came up with the new numbers, was there a specific number of hours you were allotting for staff time? And what is the cost per hour that it costs the city for the staff to spend?
Yes, as part of the study, the comprehensive study we did two years ago, it went through how, how long does it take to do each of these tasks? Each position that needs to do something all the way through. So it came out with that full cost, that's what the comprehensive study does. And then it does apply an hourly rate for that type of position. So that's part of what that, the RCS consultant did, they did that whole process. This update, they took those same hours and they updated it for the dollars, the, the changes in an hourly rate, or the changes in our, the cost that the city has. So that's primarily what was done. There were some new fees, and that's where, on those newer fees, then they did that same process of determining how many hours it takes, it takes to do that, provide that service, and then apply those costs.
Any other questions? Ms. Tamora?
Just, just to make sure it's clear, we understood that it was a 50% increase for the developer fees. That's what we were told. I actually had several people that wanted to come to this meeting tonight, and I said, "Don't worry, because they're only going to doing the 50% recovery," because that's what I was told when these fees are being prepared. I understand as, and it's not even clear in the recommendation, you don't even see the recommendation for 100% until it's halfway through the second page. It's not listed anywhere in the resolution, it's not made in the recommendation. So it's, this, it was confusing staff report, and it's my, my mistake for not zeroing in on this. But we're requesting the 50% increase for the application fees, as was indicated to us during our working meetings. If it goes to, if, if it's going to go to 100%, we'd like to ask for a continuance because there's people here that have, you know, staked in this that I, I told them, "Don't worry, the city will go only with what the recommendation was back in the last time we raised these," which is a 50% increase and then 100% in 2026.
Thank you, Ms. Tamora.
Thank you.
Ms. Soto?
I have a question. Do city staff expect us to fall further behind if we continue to do the 50% incremental
It will, I mean, we will, it will take us longer to generate those funds that we're losing by not going full cost at this point. losing by not going full cost at this point. So from a professional standpoint, it's our recommendation to go to full cost because of that. If, if you decide to go at 50%, the mid-range, then, you know, we'll get there, it's just going to be keeping getting jumps. So it's just going to mean that we're going to have less to allocate from, we're going to have to subsidize more from our tax sources to pay for those, if those costs are being, if those services are being provided, we're subsidizing them. So it's who should be paying for them, and who does council, how does council feel about those?
In terms of who's paying them, being the taxpayers?
Taxpayers or the individual users.
Just, yeah, Mary said at the end what I was going to say, but with the finer point, I'd say is the costs are the costs that you see here. So the full cost is what the cost is, and the issue is really who does the council want to have paid for it? The person incurring the service or the taxpayers?
Any other comment from council? Okay. I do notice, though, in the resolution, we don't say there's 50% in there.
Right. So the resolution set up where you can adopt either of the columns, and then we'll delete the other column and have that as the attached fee schedule. And obviously, you can do something different than that. But the way we set it up was to have the resolution, if you adopt the resolution and one of the columns, we'll make that the adopted fee schedule. And as Ms. Harvey said, that does include a number of the fees that aren't being asked to change tonight, but then we'd have a comprehensive fee schedule we would publish on the website.
One of the columns being phase-in or full cost recovery. Correct.
Okay. And then we have, the goal of the city is to achieve 100% cost recovery by 2026.
Yes, that was the goal set by council at the last approval in May of 2021.
So if we, can I ask a question? So if we want to do full cost recovery by 2026, your recommendation is to do 50% and then increase it?
No.
So our recommendation is to do the full cost recovery, not subsidize. The direction from the council before was to incrementally get to it over 2026. And so that other column shows what that would be if you, if you stay with the prior council direction.
Got it.
Okay. So you, so we have the phase-in cost recovery or the full cost recovery fee?
Yes.
Okay. Let me ask you a question then. On the reduced fees on S 009 through S 013, and we had talked about, that was the downtown specific plan, and we had talked about reduced fees for that.
Well, that's a thing.
Okay, Mr. Watson.
Again, when we're dealing with the downtown specific plan, where we have done development agreements, the council has discretion of reducing fees as part of that. The question is, are you going to reduce fees from a already reduced fee scenario, or are you going to reduce fees from 100%, which shows the value that development has to the city and the city council? And it's a discretionary item at the time that you folks are reviewing the project. That's, we believe, is a better option.
Okay, thank you. Okay. It is the pleasure here.
If there aren't any other discussions?
So you've got, you've got either your phase-in cost recovery fee or your full cost recovery fee. Okay. I guess my question, how come there's the discrepancy on what the developers are, you know, the group that Ms. Tamara represents and our side, I guess?
The, so it's the who pays the cost for the service, right? So over, part of the issue and why these cost increases are so big is we haven't updated them over time as costs increased, and so now the council's in a catch-up position. What Ms. Harvey mentioned is, we intend to do in the future, per the council's direction, is to update these fees periodically, biannually, do a review and update them annually, and that'll keep us from being in this position again. And so that's really the issue, is there's, the fees have been lower than it costs for a number of years, and we've done a fee study, recognize that that is then resulting in us having to spend general fund in ways that maybe the council hadn't intended. And so we wanted to highlight that with this and show that there is general fund going to these user fees and not then being available for the other unfunded liabilities the council has, like the road sidewalk pensions and workers' compensation, those other items.
Thank you. I guess my only concern is, is if we do the 100% full recovery right now, I just think that impedes what we're trying to do in getting the development to come to Santa Maria. And we know we need to build. So I would certainly support the phase-in cost recovery, but you were going to...
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We, the city of Santa Maria cannot continue to give away public dollars in the way that it has. This is, at this point, us being irresponsible by not doing what we can to get the full cost recovery of the services that we are providing as a city. And instead, it's falling on the taxpayers. That is misuse of public funds, and I would not be in support of that. Furthermore, we were just having a discussion last council meeting about increasing salaries for city council members, but yet we're not willing to recover the costs associated to providing these fees.
No, I think it's important to recover the fees. I just think it's important to do it in a better fashion than just in one lump sum. I don't think we're giving away public dollars, we just, we don't have them. So it's not like we're giving away, we're just not getting as much as we could for them, so.
And by not getting as much as we could, is giving them away, though, because we are spending more on providing the service than we are in getting those funds recovered. So in a way, it is us misusing public funds in a certain way. It's us subsidizing the cost.
I guess it's all in the semantics, Ms. Soto.
And from my understanding, that can also open us up to a lawsuit.
So, okay, do I, I need a motion and...
No, go ahead.
Oh, I need a motion in a second. Or did you want to say anything else?
Not for discussion. So we're moving to, okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah. Since last meeting, since that meeting in 2021, I actually didn't agree, and today I do not agree on either one of the options. I think it's, it's important to first to know, so we're talking about potential revenue. And that word, the potential, the potential to have $1,000 more, it's that, it's something that we don't have, we don't know if we're going to have. And it sounds interesting to say, oh, if we increase to 100%, it's going to be $1 million, $1.1 million more. But some of these increases, like the appeal, it just, just, I don't know how many of the people that will apply for, for such an increase from $6,517 to $14,230. I think it's, that increase is just, I think it would be less likely for somebody to go and do an appeal. So those increases are just, I think that, and my point is that if we increase to $14,000 in this situation, somebody might not even appeal to the council, and we're going to be ended up losing $6,517 that we currently have, or $10,375. So at that time, my recommendation, my idea, and the idea, I will bring it, bring it back, is to really look into all these items individually, because they have different impact in the community. Like the landscaping map, that can affect a small business owner, or somebody who's doing a renovation of a small lot, somebody who wants to build a small two-apartment or a duplex or triplex, that wants to start their own, their own business. So I think it's, we need to, I mean, with a payment, I see that we used to charge $95 plus other costs. And I would be happy to go all the way to 220 and go all full on, because there's some, or even the drinking, the false alarm response, we need to go 100%. The tobacco retail permit, we can go 100%. Or the ABC one-day license, we can go up. But just, you know, actually, we're going to 100% with that one. So I think it's, or affordable housing loan process, going from $95 to 220, it just, I think it's a, it will impact the, it will impact the city. So I would definitely recommend, I'll bring it back again, to look into individual and how that would affect, so we do not end up not getting even 50% of the recovery.
I have a question.
Wait, Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would be much more in favor of the incremental increases. I disagree that we would be giving the money away or abusing our authority just how we're going to spend money or make money, and that getting 100% of nothing is not nearly as good as getting a smaller percent of something. And I think we don't have any idea what the developers are going to do, but if they know that this is coming, it might even encourage them to do the developing sooner than to wait until the fees go up. So we don't know, we can't, we can't predict what will absolutely happen. But fixing these fees and saying, well, we messed up here, and we're going to adjust all these fees immediately, I think we would be asking for an uproar in the development community. And doing it in phases would be much more palatable for us and for the, for the building community. So I don't think doing it all at once is a very good idea.
Ms. Aguilar Hernandez?
Yes, I have a question as to Mr. Councilman Escobedo. If we go line by line by line, there's 245, how would we direct staff to look at them individually? Because I think that would depend on the types of services it impacts, I guess. So how would we organize that so that we could do it in one meeting? Because it probably would take hours to go through each line item. How do you propose we do that?
Time to, Councilmember Aguilar. I'll put dinner, I'll cook dinner, we can stay. I think it's a sit down, spend a couple of hours on this item, it would be worth it, even a special council, council meeting that, where we can go line by line, and then we bring it back to them, and then we decided what's, kind of like create our own project or idea, or, yeah, actually, our own, let's say, recommendation. And then, because I mean, I keep seeing all these permits, and some are there, like, we shouldn't be, it just, we should be going all the way to the 100, some other, like, makes you think. And, yeah, so I think it's, we can sit down and have, and go over it. I mean, it might take some time, but I think it's important, as Mr. Soto mentioned, it's a...
Mister?
Mrs.
Oh.
Sorry. Sorry. You know, it's, it's the taxpayers, it's the development community, so trying to find a common ground where we don't lose more from these services.
I think 50% is too low. I can see the development community not wanting to do 100%, so I understand that. But I do think 50% is too low. So choosing between the two is really difficult for me, which is why I was asking what Mr. Escobedo was proposing in terms of going line by line and figuring out what services it affects. And so what I would propose is if staff can lump each section that they can to what services it impacts, so that we would be able to say, yes, this section should go 100%, and this section should be at 75%, so that we do have a phase in. But I just think 50% is really low, and I wouldn't be in favor of that today.
How would we recommend, if we're, I mean, if we're saying, or if some of us are saying that 50% is too low and 100% is too high, then how would we make that determination of what would be in between?
Well, I don't think she's suggesting the whole thing, one or the other. I think she's suggesting the different, I don't know how you divide them into categories, but...
But my question, I guess, would be, would it be like, what's expensive to us? Like, oh, we see this, and, I don't know, $8,500 is too much for that service? Like, how would we make that, like, how would we, where would we pull that number from?
Well, that's why I asked about the hours, how long it takes, what it costs the city, and how much are we willing to subsidize? If we're only willing to subsidize 20% because it takes 20 hours at $8,500 an hour, then we'd say, yeah, we're not going to subsidize that section, but we're willing to subsidize in other areas, because we don't want to affect the small businesses or the mom and pops who do want to do the small tentative map, who do want to, you know, improve their landscape. So I think that would be on a case-by-case basis as well. I understand the downtown, we have discretion in the future, so we could approve that at 100%. And if we feel that that should be reduced in the future, we have the ability to do that.
Mr. Cordero.
Madam Mayor, I think that we've got some great staff members that this could be assigned to, and that us getting in there, as we're putting here and saying, we look at this one and look at that one, I think that's getting to micromanaging, and that we need to trust in what the staff members come back with. I don't, I don't believe that we should look as though we're going to have to sit down with these people and do this. I think that's why we have staff to do these things and trust them, that they're going to come up with the, with the answers. I think we can issue some guidelines, we've probably already done that, and let's listen to what our people have to say. Let's not, I don't think we should be involved in the, in the intricate details of deciding, well, this is going to take a shovel and a hoe, and this one's going to take a pick and a jackhammer, and so this one ought to cost more. I think that the staff will understand what needs to be done, and let's trust that the staff does the work that them and their supervisors have the ability to do.
And they're recommending full cost recovery.
So, yeah, that's...
Well, we're going to get full cost recovery, but it's just going to have to be phased in and not all at once.
By 2026, yeah. Right. So they've, they've given us two options, and I'm saying I don't like either option. And Mr. Escobedo has said that, right? You've said you want the 50%. Ms. Soto has said she wants the 100%.
I want full cost recovery.
Full cost recovery. So we don't really have a consensus. And so that's why I'm trying to suggest, how do we all come together and have a middle ground where we can move forward?
Yes, just one minute. Mr. Escobedo, go ahead.
Thank you. And it was, as it was mentioned, I believe it was a seat attorney in regards to downtown permitting, and he just made a good point about, we're going to be able to, we're able to, I mean, we have done it already in a couple of projects, give incentive, so give an incentive of what's... So giving incentive of what's already incentivized is those kind of situations that, I mean, it's just the double incentive on, on that one. So, so I think that we can find some, some common ground, some in-between where, yeah.
So, you know, and when I see development fees, I don't mind waiting till twenty twenty-six to get, you know, full-cost recovery. There are some things in here, as you mentioned, that I, I could go a hundred percent recovery right now, but it's hard, it's, you know, you've got five of us and we don't have all night. So anyway, Ms. Harvey.
I just wanted to clarify, I just wanted to make sure you understood that we're, you're talking about fifty percent, but that's fifty percent of the increase. So we're already at about fifty percent, so at the current rates. So going to that mid-range is about, on average, seventy-five percent of full cost. So that is that incremental. So I just wanted to make that clarification and that, you know, we, like, Mr. Stillwell said, the, the cost of the cost, that's what we're spending on these. And so by getting at least the incremental, you're getting to that point of phasing into that full cost by twenty twenty-six. That would be, that's, I mean, some, doing something is better than doing nothing.
So the phase-in cost recovery fee right now is approximately about seventy-five percent then?
On average.
Of what we were, what were we, what we were going to do?
So, so what I suggest is that we approve the increase of fifty percent, which is what we told the development community, and then determine if we want to come back at a later time to discuss line by line by line. But that's going to be a separate meeting where it's going to take lots of hours. So I want to know what the legal ramifications of that are.
Mr. Watson.
Again, I, I think the, the legal ramifications are, that, that's well within your discretion. And, and the practical may be that rather than going line by line, provide staff with those areas that you think either should be a hundred percent now or those areas that should be something more than seventy-five percent. And if you provide that, then we're not looking at two hundred line items, we're looking at twenty-five, thirty, or fifty. But the reason that staff provided you two incremental options was so that we could get to the twenty twenty-six mark without having this discussion at twenty twenty-six and having to make a large gap. Because the cost will also escalate over the next two years for our internal costs and those will be added on. And if you, the, the reason we're here-
Yeah.
-is we didn't do this regularly.
And that's my, Madam Mayor, that's my concern, is that it's seventy-five percent right now, but inflation is very high, so we're really talking about sixty-five in a year. And that's why I prefer to look at chunks line by line if we can. But for today, I would make a motion that we approve the fifty percent increase, which would get us to seventy-five percent.
Is there a second?
I need to get some clarification. Fifty percent of the fifty percent left, is that what you're saying?
You're talking about the phase-in recovery fee column?
Yeah, the phase-in recovery, which you were in support of-
Yeah.
-or stated you were in support of earlier, so that at least we have something in place for now.
Because right now, we have the phase-in recovery fee column and we have the full-cost recovery fee column, and that's the hundred percent.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's your recommendation?
That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Just-
Go ahead, Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to emphasize that I understand the phasing cost, but I think it's a, I reiterate my recommendation to go ahead and, and do in-between or something that it's more able to get us revenue to provide more services.
So more than fifty percent?
In, in some cases, hundred percent, some cases seventy-five, you know, or, it just, I don't, I never, I do not feel comfortable going one, one side to, on one or the other in, in this situation. I think it's a, it just, I don't like just cut it one, it's just one cut, so, yeah.
Okay, any further discussion?
So, yes, I do have a question. So the, the motion on the floor is to increase-
Phase-in recovery.
To phase-in-
Yeah.
-which gets us to seventy-five percent today and then schedule a follow-up in twenty twenty-four? To come to another increase? Or how, how, how much time would we get to wait?
Yeah, well, I think, so again, so I didn't hear any of the council members saying you wanted less than the phase-in. So I think having the phase-in is the floor made sense. And, and then if there are some individuals, line items that you want to have higher than, like-
Or lower.
Or, yeah, or lower, then I think we can identify those and bring them back as the budget. Because the goal with us doing it at this point is so we can bring back a comprehensive budget for you in June-
Okay.
-that identifies both your priorities and also your revenue that you can allocate based on your expenditure priorities.
Okay.
And so that, I wouldn't say twenty twenty-four, I would say that's, if you, if the motion is to adopt the phase-in recovery fee column, then to do that. And then I'll work with the council on identifying for the budget priorities, what those should be, whether we chunk them up and bring it back in the budget or some other way.
So each council member can take this home for their homework and figure out which areas they want to, to do the hundred percent recovery?
Yes.
Okay, and we, you can give us a deadline and we can work from there.
June?
No.
No.
Next month.
Yeah, we bring the budget back in June, so we would need to, and we'd obviously have to balance it to whatever this revenue is.
Okay.
So we're, the reason we brought it now was so we had time to build it into the budget. So we don't have a lot of time, but there aren't a lot of line items, this isn't actually, there aren't a lot of areas, it sounds like, where you want further analysis and review and input. So I think, yeah, a month or so, we should be able to then build it into the budget and be able to bring you a comprehensive financial plan in June.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Ms. Escobedo?
Okay, yeah, just, I mean, I, I understand that, that part and, and I think it's a, I definitely can go through item by item. I just, at this point, and I, I mean, I stay on the same position as last year on not just, I do not like the idea of going one way or the other in this item. So, but I, but I, I'm happy that we're going to be able to give some input on specific items. So, yeah, just, just that comment, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We've got a, we have a first and a second. Madam Clerk, can you call roll?
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
No.
Councilmember Escobedo?
No.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item? Next item is a report by City Manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I have two items to report tonight. First is an opportunity for updating on our general plan process. As you know, we're identif, we're analyzing the land use alternatives ahead of bringing the plan to the city council. So the city is having two additional public outreach efforts as part of the land use alternatives. The outreach efforts include two land use alternative orientation workshops, including a presentation, an opportunity to ask questions and share thoughts regarding the future growth of the city. The presentations will be in English with Spanish and Mesteco interpretation. The first one is a Zoom workshop, and that's April fifth at five thirty. And there's a registration link available on the ImagineSantaMaria.com page. The in-person workshop is April sixth at five thirty at Shepherd Hall. And then the Land Use Alternative Survey, residents can provide feedback to the city by taking a brief land use alternative survey. That's also at wwwimagensantamaria.com. The survey will be available from April fifth to May second. And we're also going to hold office hours with residents for additional questions regarding land use alternatives. They can attend those in person on April eighteenth from one thirty to three at the Public Works Engineering Conference Room at one ten South Pine or on Zoom on April nineteenth from ten AM to eleven thirty AM with a registration link on ImagineSantaMaria.com. And then the second announcement is the next meeting of the city councils, April eighteenth. We have two presentations. One is the annual presentation from Central Coast Community Energy. And the, the second presentation is on Hope Village, the Dignity Moves Project at the county government site. And then we have one regular business item, which is the funding of the Japanese Community Center and update on that project at the Enos Ranch, or the Enos, Smith Enos Park and Ranch House site. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Stillwell. So let's do our, council members' reports. Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Mayor. On the twenty-third, I attended the CCWA meeting, water meeting in Hewleton. It was an in-person meeting, productive. And then on the twenty-third, I was at the Santa Barbara Foundation. It was a status report in luncheon in Los Alamos that the Santa Barbara Foundation put on. It was also very informative. And then I was, on the same day, I was at the Santa Maria Country Club for the, an update on the housing summit there at the Santa Maria Country Club. Very informative. On the twenty-eighth, there was a promotion and a welcoming at the Police Department. There were five new officers sworn in. And I think I already told you, Madam Mayor, but the Police Department has hired its first Oaxacan-speaking officer, right?
Mesteco.
Mesteco, okay. Mesteco officer. And it was strongly suggested that he's probably going to be very busy. And it, it was nice to see that we're coming up and we're getting a, a lot more young officers put, put into the Police Department. I was a little surprised and embarrassed to tell my wife that one of the officers that was sworn in that day, she was the principal when he was very young in elementary school here. She was not happy to hear that. Then on the twenty-ninth, I was at a luncheon and awards banquet for, also for the Police Department. And that was also very nice, very, very well done by the personnel out at the Police Department. And then as late as today, I was at the Montecito Bank and Trust ribbon cutting out on South Broadway. And I've been to a lot of those over the years, but this one seemed to be, and I don't mean just warmer because we were inside, but, but it just seemed to be very, very emotionally warmer, where, where the people were very, very nice. It was, it was nice to, to be there and-
They want your money.
Yeah, they want my money. So, so that would do it for me, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, I attended the Santa Police Department Annual Awards Luncheon. And that same day, I attended the Hispanic Business Mixer at the Boys and Girls Club, put together by the Hispanic Committee of the Center, of the Chamber of Commerce. On, on April first, I attended the Valentina Martins Memorial Luncheon. It was the first time attending it, it was great. Councilmember Aguilar was there and, well, I'll, I'll let, I'll let you talk about that, but it was a fun, really, it was the energy inside of it was just incredible and kudos to everybody who was, who's putting that together every year. And on this Sunday, April second, I attended a concert to, to give a certificate recognizing thirty-six years of music career and promotion of culture to a band called Quixillos. Actually, there, I, I was raised listening to their music, so I was pretty excited to. They're from a, really, like, ten minutes from my hometown back in Mexico, so I was really excited to be there and see the guys that were in those music videos as well. But it was a really nice day, really cold, but people were just dancing, dancing, so, and that's pretty much. Thank you.
Ms. Aguilar Hernandez?
Yes, I attended the Santa Maria Police Department Awards Luncheon. I was at the Ben Hayes Show, the Valentina Memorial. I modeled cabbie clothing. It was a teal journey, it is for ovarian cancer prevention. It raised a lot of money, the event sold out, because I was there. And then I attended the Princess Party at the Mall with Ariel and Rapunzel. The Mall is really doing a lot of activities. They had an Easter as well, where the kids decorated. They're, they're really trying to get families to come in. I think that's so smart of them, to reach the children, because then the parents have to go and then while you're there, you're shopping. So I attended that. I think it's important to support our businesses. So I've attended the Easter event and then the Princess Party.
Thank you. Ms. Soto?
Thank you. I, on Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, I attended the Santa Barbara Foundation convening on housing and its impacts on local economies and the nonprofit sector. And that same day, I attended the Santa Maria PD Annual Awards Luncheon, and that's all I have.
Thank you. The twenty-first, I did the Ben Hayes Show. On the twenty-second of March, I attended the Marion Foundation Board of Directors Meeting. And that evening, the Altroga Annual Junior High Awards, which the Altroga Club goes through a lot of, of pain to get all these kids from the junior highs in the area and recognize them. They aren't necessarily the kids that do best academically, but they are kids who are the sunshiny kids, I guess, in each campus. On March twenty-third, I attended the PAC feasibility study about doing a performing arts center here in Santa Maria. I attended the HBA Valley Housing Summit. On the twenty-fifth, I did the California Teleconference on Housing. On the twenty-sixth, I attended the Alliance of Local Electeds, and that's on Zoom. On the twenty-seventh, I attended the Vandenberg Space Force Base Economic Development Meeting. On March twenty-ninth, I attended the CMF PD Annual Awards Luncheon and the Econ Alliance Infrastructure Forum later that day. And on the twenty-second, again, I did the California Alliance of Local Electeds, which is about housing. And this afternoon, I attended the ribbon cutting at the Montecito Bank and Trust. This evening, I, I'd like to adjourn our meeting in, for Phyllis Kyoto, who was a teacher at Santa Maria High School, and she taught there for twenty-seven years. And she had so much grace and dignity, everybody respected her, she always had a smile, the kids, the kids loved her, she loved teaching. But she was good, she was excellent, and she demanded excellence from her students. And if they had difficulty, she was always there to spend extra time with her students. And Brad, I don't know if you had, Mrs. Kyoto? Okay. And she piled on the homework. When you had her, you didn't have time for anything else in your life. And so, but such a fantastic person that gave so much to this community and to the students in our community. And Phyllis, you are going to be missed. And ladies and gentlemen, this concludes tonight's meeting.
Thank you.